Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counsel Gerson. Counsel Trask.
Present.
Counsel Gorley. Counsel Coleman, present. Counsel Sanchez.
Here.
Counsel Richards.
Present.
Let the record show we have seven present with no absent. Before we get started, I'll go ahead and read the meeting instructions for online participation in public meetings. Thank you for everyone who is enjoying us this evening. For members of the public who would like to take part in the tonight's meeting virtually, we have some instructions to help in case you're new to using the Microsoft Teams. To take part, you will need to locate the chat bubble icon to participate in the meeting online. The chat bubble icon indicated with a yellow arrow on your screen now may be in the upper right-hand corner of your screen, or you may need to click on the three dots to see an extended dropdown menu. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak during the meeting, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, enter your name, address, phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss with the council. If you have signed in, you may be called upon to speak at any point during the meeting. You probably during the agenda item you have entered to speak about. You can choose the hand icon also located in the upper right-hand corner to indicate the desire to speak. It's equivalent to raising your hand. The mayor, acting chairperson, or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We'll give you enough, well, excuse me, we'll give everyone who may wish to speak tonight a few minutes right now to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic they'd like to address with the council. In the interest of time, speakers should not repeat the points of previous speaker. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Any extension of that time is at the sole discretion of the mayor or the meeting chairperson per council rules. Those joined by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor chairperson and called to speak at an appropriate time. The fact that the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have the people removed from the meeting as stated in the council rules. And a reminder for all council members and for the folks in the audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn them off or at least silence them. Thank you. At this time, consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in fair by roll call, please.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Counsel Richards.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson. Counsel Trask.
Yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Record show that we have seven ayes, no nays approval of the consent agenda. At this time, recognition of visitors and hearing a petition. Anybody who would like to come forward before council be heard. Old business, request for council action 2021 salary adjustment for non-represented and AFSCME employees.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just real quick as a reminder for the counselors, if you're going to speak, please remember to turn on your microphone. They are directional, so you do have to get quite close to them so that the people taking part online can hear you. Um, this RCA is on page eight of your council packet. Essentially, if I can kind of recall some history, a little over a year ago, we ran into this thing called COVID. At that time, there was a lot of uncertainty and a lot of people unsure of what would happen in our world, particularly related to our finances. During this time, we were in the midst of some negotiations with our AFSCME employees, and as members of management, we were all concerned about our team. As such, we as management came to the council and we offered to give up our cost of living. Have any potential job. And the AFSC union. This calendar year. As we all will recall, the first four and a half months of our revenues were below expectations. At one point, I personally was slightly panicked on a couple of areas. Since that time, however, our revenues have turned around and we're projecting here at the end of the third quarter that our revenues will actually be above expectations in. Which is to be expected with COVID, people did not travel, and so they didn't buy gas. The resolution negating the cost of living increases. Council agreed that we could look at this at a later time, and if council believes that it can be afforded, we would reinstate those cost of living adjustments for the AFSCME employees and the members of, not only department heads, but there are some middle managers who also volunteered to forego their cost of living increases. So there's certainly some more specific information in the RCAs, which explain that the council determines all pays scales. And then we have a little information, Brandon's got some information to share with you as well. There's a couple other things in here. As we discussed a couple meetings ago, the chief would like to utilize cost savings to restructure just a bit and add a captain's position. There's vacancies, at least a vacancy amongst his sergeants, which creates significant cost savings. And they've also had cost savings related to a couple officer positions that have been open. So there should, there should not be, or we would not anticipate any negative impact on the police department budget because of that with this change. The other thing that we're asking you to consider is an information technology services manager. Again, we do not anticipate any negative impacts to the budget with this position. For me personally, it comes down to it's the right thing to do because we should not be, in my opinion, continuing to rely, to carry all that. On top of that, we're spending a ton of money. I'm not getting it again if we had somebody in-house. So between allowing both Brandon to focus on what his core mission should be, the expectation of getting better value and better service, and actually what you'll see is we think we can save a little bit of money as well by bringing this position in-house, we're going to ask for permission to bring a new position onboard for that. With that. Brandon, am I forgetting anything?
Uh, no, but I'm going to start my section of this with a small apology. In going through and preparing the presentation for you today, I did realize that somehow, and I quite honestly don't know how, managed to miss, I guess, I typed in the wrong numbers for the police chief and for the police captain. So I do have revised resolutions for you. The numbers, you can see the changes specifically that I made. And that's certainly something we can talk about, and I can walk you through if needed. We are going to walk through the methodology for setting these salaries, at least how they have been set in the past. And again, I do apologize for the mistake in your packets. So I'll start down here at the end, and we can just kind of hand them down. All right, while those are making their way around the room, I will start kind of talking about the methodology for how these are set, particularly because there are new positions in here. We wanted to refresh everybody's memories on how these salary ranges are set amongst our comparator cities. So the first part of this, and it might be hard to see on your screens, is that we go out and we find a comparable, comparable position at each of our, what we call comparator cities, which are cities of similar size and scope. For the duration of this part of the presentation, I'm going to use the police chief as the example because it was the easiest one to grab. Thanks, Jeff. The next part is we obtained the midpoint of the salary range for each of those comparable cities. So as a reminder, our comparable cities include Independence, Malala, Monmouth, Sheridan, Silverton, and State. So six cities all have similar population sizes, all have similar-ish budgets. Silverton is by far the highest budget in our grouping at about $40 million a year. But that is offset quickly by Sheridan, whose budget is about $16 million a year. For comparison, Sweet Homes is about $23 million annually. So we find the midpoint of their salary range. And what we do for that is grab whatever, if they have 10 steps, we'll find that middle step and use that salary as the basis for our calculation. Once we've got all six of our comparator cities together, we find out what the average is for that midpoint, and we remove 5% right off the top. From there, we add 3% from the value from that average number calculated in step three above to equal steps D and steps E on the salary table. So those you'll see in your packet in exhibit A. In the case of the police department, they do have a step F, which is another 5% above step E, just for your reference. After that, we reduce 5% from, again, that average number and go backwards to get steps A and B. So from step A to B is a 5% increase, B to C is a 5% increase, and the steps D and E are 3% increases each. So in the case of the police chief, that midpoint, as you can see on the screen for each of those cities, I won't necessarily go through and read all of them. Sheridan is the only one that did not have a police chief in their, in their list of positions. They must contract likely with the local county jurisdiction. So they did not have a chief in their list. The average midpoint for each of those cities was $8,918 a month. In applying our methodology, we'll take 5% off the top of that. So our middle salary, step C, will start at $8,472, and that's what you should see in your packets, the new ones that I handed out to you. We wanted to kind of highlight what that means for Sweet Home salaries overall. So some of these cities have 10 steps, some of these cities have 11 steps, some have five, like we do. They all vary significantly. But what I've done in this table for you is outline the high and the low salary for each one of the comparable organizations, again, using the police chief. And what we're, what we're trying to highlight down at the bottom is kind of that, I guess, differential in Sweet Home salaries, given our local economy, which includes the demographics, the income levels, all of, all of that that's taken into account when trying to establish kind of an economic baseline for a city. You can see that based on our starting salary, we fall at about 96% of kind of that average salary range. But as you go up through those, through those remaining steps, Sweet Home salaries are quickly outpaced, with this one in particular being just 89% of the average comparable city. So that's kind of a snapshot in how we calculate our salaries for non-represented folks, which is the one that's before you. Certainly, the AFSCME and the Sweet Home Police Employees Association contracts are negotiated each, each cycle. And so those, the methodology, the calculation method that the city applies initially is the same. But what actually comes out of those numbers may or may not be different. It depends on how the negotiations go and what comes out at the end. So the question on everybody's mind likely is what does this do to our bottom line? I have gone through and listed each fund here. The general fund, the police department, the library, internal service fund, water, wastewater, storm, and streets, all of those funds that have personnel expenditures in them. The second column there is the budget for each of those funds. So we'll, we'll use the general fund as an example. The general fund had a personnel budget of $919,680 for this current fiscal year. Based on data through March 31st, 2021, I estimate the actual expenditures for personnel will come in at $826,683. That's 67.6% of the total budget spent on personnel in our estimates. Vacancy savings is the biggest reason for the discrepancy. Those are certainly hard to plan for. But also some additional savings potentially in our healthcare rates, which we saw a decrease this year from what we had anticipated and other benefits as well. I, what I put into this table is 3% as of January 2021, which is the recommendation in your RCA. We can certainly look at this for any other proposal or any other variation that the council would like to review, but I needed a baseline to kind of get you, to give you an estimate of what this looks like. So for the general fund, what's necessary if we were to retro the increases back to January, we would need $7,087. That covers the salary increase, the 3%, and that covers the additional costs that the city would incur in sending retirement funds to each of the employees' accounts. So as part of our benefit package. So I did include both of those costs. Those are our, they go hand in hand. That would put our new projection for personnel costs at $833,770, still below the $919,680 budget. So all of the funds listed on here, except for one, would not need today a budget transfer. Now, I say that, but we still have three months left in the year. Things could change if somebody, if somebody decides to retire, that there are payouts that we have associated with somebody who decides to depart us. There are still potential changes that could change what I'm telling you today. But based on the information I have at hand, the only fund that would need an adjustment in order to handle this 3% increase is the wastewater fund. The wastewater fund right now is actually currently over expended in personnel. It's a, the projection shows 103.6%. We did have somebody, a longtime employee who left the organization, which resulted in some payouts, as I mentioned before, vacation, different, various accruals. And so that, that fund already needs an adjustment likely before the end of the year, unless other line items in the materials and services can pick that up, which is allowable in Oregon budget law. So that is the only fund that potentially may need to make an adjustment depending on council's decision today. That's all I have as far as prepared remarks. But certainly, if you have any questions, I am happy to address them.
Mr. Mayor, I have one quick question. So this is for the non-represented.
Yes.
And we're going to get to the union one.
So these numbers that I'm presenting to you, because the RCA contains both outlined, these numbers I'm presenting to you are, is everything. So the 3% for the non-represented, as well as the 3% for the AFSCME general service contract. And they would both be effective at the same time, given, given what was negotiated.
You said January 1st, as you're talking about January 1st, 2021?
Yes, so really what we, what these, what your RCA demonstrates is that we could retro this back to the January payroll, for example, which really means that the salaries would become effective December 16th because that's the beginning of the pay period for the January check. So January, or December 16th, 2020 is if, if council chose the recommendation, when these would become effective.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to tell you that I'm, I'm not surprised, but I'm happy that you guys took that step. Not that you didn't deserve the raise, I think you do. But it was a pretty, pretty cool thing you did. And also the union employees. I mean, it, it kind of surprised me a little bit, but I'm happy you guys made that call because of the community. And I think that's a good thing, and I think you should kind of be rewarded for that. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, questions, the counselors.
Brandon, first of all, thank you for this.
Of course.
Because I was unable to make a decision without this information, so I really appreciate having it. I don't, personally don't understand why we have three choices here. What, what, what's the rationale, actually four choices, what's the rationale behind that?
So I think there are, there are four. One, two, three. I think we did, basically, we selected options that tie together with each quarter. So basically, the July check, the September, yeah, the July check, the September check, the January check, and the, I think, effective with the April check. We gave those options, and then I believe the last option says that council could ask us to look at something entirely different, either a new percentage, a new, a new timeline implementation. It really, yes, we outlined three or four specific options and then said, or you could throw me a curveball and make me, and have me come back. And that's certainly not an issue, but that's kind of the open-endedness of this. You know, I could certainly list out many, many options for, for all of you, but we tried to kind of cover the bases in that last, that last available option.
So, Mr. Mayor, so if I understand that, then when we look at option three, for instance, the cost would be $27,000 more than what you've listed in front of us now distributed across those areas. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, it would, it would be $27,000 for the whole year. Yeah.
Right, okay, all right, thank you, I understand that now.
Any other questions, counselors?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, please. I would ask council to think about what has happened over this past year. Our, our team didn't get time off for COVID. Our team worked through COVID on the line, continued to provide service in all facets and all areas of city functions. Further through the fires, when we needed staff, they answered. They, they didn't try to say, I don't want to come in, I'm afraid. The staff came. I would implore that you strongly consider this for, for our team and for our employees. And I'd like to reiterate, this is not a raise. This is a cost of living adjustment. Because without this cost of living adjustment, because of inflation, the employees lose their buying power. The value of their check literally will go down the rate of inflation. So as you've seen, our employees, and using the police chief, for example, already are 11% or so, depending on the position, but the chief, for example, already gives 11% to the community in order to serve this community. And when we don't give those cost of living adjustments, they just fall further and further behind. I've said it once, I'll say it again. We have a tremendous team here from the top down. We've worked really hard at, at building a culture that encourages our staff to do great things. We've seen some of those things in the past couple of years. And so I would very, very much ask that you please consider this for our employees. Thank you.
I have to echo City Manager Towery's sentiments. I think the employees are doing a phenomenal job. Last year was very trying during a lot of things that went on. I think all employees need to be commended for what they've done, what they've came up to the plate and have done during the time, and I have to read. Any other further questions? Need a council directive.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve option two.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counsel Gerson.
Yes.
Counsel Trask.
Uh, yes.
Counsel Gorley.
Yes.
Counsel Coleman.
Yes.
Counsel Sanchez.
Yes.
Let the record show we have seven ayes with no nays approval of resolution number 12.
Two.
Yeah, option two.
Thank you very much.
I'm moving on to new business, mayor's appointment to council. So it is on to the library advisory board.
As we discussed previously in a meeting, we approved a change in which we would appoint a member of the council to the library board. So this is where the mayor gets to appoint said person, part of the purview of being the mayor. You just get to say who it is.
Okay.
I think they did when they approved the change to the ordinance.
At this time, I would go ahead and appoint Counsel Coleman to fill that role.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to vote.
You're out of line.
I'm sure you would.
Moving on, request for council action transient lodging tax, T L T I G A.
So this, this begins on page 37 of your council packet. So years ago, the hospitality industry and, and the state. So years ago, the hospitality industry and, and the state came to an agreement for a lodging tax, which is a tax that's charged upon every hotel room or overnight accommodation. And the agreement was, hey, you can tax us, but that money should go back into helping to foster or supporting efforts that create tourism. In other words, kind of a self-replenishing type of, of fund and idea. There have been several reiterations of that fund, which actually adjusted the amount that could be levied. What the city did is, is we have not changed ours, so we've actually been grandfathered into our current amount. So we collect some tax, the county collects some tax, and the state collects some tax. What's in the process of happening is the state is simply developing a system where they would collect the tax, potentially for anybody who would like to. So we could all agree through an intergovernmental agreement for, for the state to collect the tax and then redistribute it down through the counties and the cities. Currently, the state's not quite there yet. So as a city, we're still collecting it on our own. We're sending out bills to, to all of the transient lodging facilities that we're aware of, businesses. The county came to us two years ago, I think, and said, hey, you guys are already, you guys know what's there better than we are. You're already collecting it. It's inconvenient for the business owners to have to write multiple checks. Could you just add a line and collect ours too? And in return, we'll give you a little bit of money for your time and your trouble. It's really simple. We've been doing it. And right now the county is just asking us to agree to continue to do that for one more year. They anticipate that the state will be able to take over that collection next year. We'll see what happens. So that's the, that's the issue that is in front of you. Is should the city continue to collect the transient lodging tax? On behalf of the county, distribute it to the county and in return, we get a little money for our time and trouble.
Questions of council.
Mr. Mayor, so Ray, are we going to have an option of going, not using the state and stay with the county? Or they don't want to do that?
So we collect our own.
Right.
And, and when that happens, we will have, I believe we will have the option of letting the state collect for us or not.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, we will have that option, but at this point, it's not an option that, that looks like it's going to be viable for Sweet Home. The startup cost for the state to be able to get there through legislation has been basically mandated that, that the program pay for itself. And so we would almost have to pay the state more than what we're collecting in, in transient lodging tax. It doesn't make a lot of sense for us. So we will, I say we, but, but Angie back there does all this great work for me. She will likely still help collect all of that. It just doesn't make sense for us to go with the state.
Any other questions, councilors?
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Um, Ray, would you be able to tell me where that tax goes to locally?
Currently it goes for a couple of different things. The bulk of it is a payment to the Chamber of Commerce to support their operation of the visitor center. That's the contract that, that the council reviews annually, usually around June-ish, May and June. Yeah, and it's a $15,000 payment that's, that's split into three payments. You set the parameters of that contract. They provide reports every three months that are available to you if you'd like to view those. They also are required to keep the visitor center open on Saturdays during the tourism season as well. They distribute visitor guides and through the mail, those kinds of things.
So it does stay local?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, does it go anywhere else besides just the chamber?
I think we do a little advertising with it. Is that where we pull out for the visitor's guide and?
We do have a little bit of advertising funds and then anything, there's not, we don't get a lot off of it. So the, the 15,000 almost covers the whole thing. But any advertising and then related expenses for economic development type opportunities is where it would go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Council directive.
Mr. Mayor, so moved, as recommended, second.
I have a motion and a second, but roll call, please.
I'm sorry, was that Counselor Coleman with a second?
Thank you.
Yes.
Mayor Mahler.
Yes.
Counselor Gerson.
Yes.
Counselor Trosk.
Yes.
Counselor Gorley.
Yes.
Counselor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Sanchez.
Yes.
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
The record show I have seven eyes with no nays approval of the transient lodging tax. Discussion only, American Rescue Plan Act funding allocation.
So this is, begins on page 46 of your packet. How do we put this? So many needs for you to consider. The American Rescue Plan Funding Act allocation is money coming down from beds as, as a COVID relief effort. We have a discussion with you about where you would like to use this money. There are some limitations. It's, it's limited to infrastructure. There are certain things that it cannot be used for, such as if we were Pers or those retirement funds, those kinds of things. But we have a lot of things that we have visions of. And so we're, we take this money, but, but we're dealing with the Willow Street lid that you could choose to contribute to. Obviously, we all know our, our issues with our streets. Our water distribution system is in, in need. Our water production system is in need at the plant. Our wastewater collections system is in need of some help. Wastewater treatment plant, stormwater parks, some economic development type things that could potentially utilize some of the funding. So there are a lot of plates spinning in the air that we're trying to keep going and, and places where this could be utilized. So I'm going to turn over to Brandon now. He's got, I think, some more specific information for you on it. But, but as we're trying to prepare a budget, we know we have the money coming. We just kind of need to, to have an idea of where you think you'd like to put it. So this is why you get paid the big bucks. I think you guys hear me say that every now and then. This is one of the times.
So the, I'll call it ARPA, A R P A. The city of Sweet Home is anticipating receiving $2,033,561. We need a place, a, a home for that to go to. And like Ray said, with, with the budget development in full swing. In fact, your, your budget documents, you will see those next week. I know you're really excited for the easy reading material. But we need kind of an idea from council on, on where you might like to see that funding go. I will say before we get too far into this, that there is limited guidance so far in the application of the funds. I outlined, based on what the League of Oregon Cities said so far, based on the text of the bill, what that funding could potentially be used for. So they include responding to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, including assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, or aid to impacted industries such as tourism, travel and hospitality. It could be used for responding to workers performing essential work during the COVID-19 public health emergency by providing premium pay. The provision of government services to the extent the, of the reduction in revenue of the city due to the COVID-19 public health emergency. For that bullet, I will say the only spot that we have seen a reduction in revenue due to the public health emergency is in streets. And the dollar amount of that, I think I put it, yes, there it is. I did put it in the memo, is $25,626. That still leaves you with significant, about 2 million to, to allocate. So certainly we could shuffle a little bit of money that direction to the tune of that 25,000 and still allocate 2 million to something else. The last line that it specifically highlights is a bone of contention for many, but it specifically says making necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. There is some potential in, I guess, you know, projects that need water and sewer work in order to complete said project. For example, if we're going to extend a line out to a location that doesn't have it, and then maybe that incurs additional costs to make sure that line gets out there. Again, we are waiting for additional guidance from the Treasury before I can say with any concrete, here it is, as to what those dollars can specifically be spent on. They could limit it further as far as, as far as I know. But what it cannot be used for is any tax reductions. Or, as Ray mentioned, deposits into pension funds, which for our case would only apply to the police department, and we're not doing so bad in that regard. So my recommendation as finance director wouldn't be to put it there anyways. So what we are looking for is I guess some council thoughts on what the best use of that 2 million might be. We are anticipating a million of that coming in within the next probably 30 days. It will land in this current fiscal year, but given the amount of time that's left in this fiscal year and the amount of work necessary to authorize the spending, the expenditure of that, of those funds, we will not spend it this year. And so I will place that into the budget, depending on kind of what the thoughts and opinions are of the council. And the budget committee is ultimately going to have a say in this as well. But this will give us a direction to give you a proposal. The other million is supposed to come in 12 months later, which means that we will likely have that in time for the 2023 fiscal year. So we will budget for that accordingly, given kind of how the next 12 months goes. The only other item that I don't think I put in here that I will mention is that all of these funds must be spent by December 31st, 2024. Anything left over goes back to the federal government. The League of Oregon Cities is advocating at this point for kind of joint efforts amongst multiple government organizations to leverage those funds to do either countywide projects or kind of sharing costs that, that you wouldn't be able to accomplish with just the 2 million. But maybe the county's portion, which I don't have right off the top of my head, could help further our progress. So lots of options, as Ray mentioned. You all, as the big dollar decision makers, I'm looking for kind of a, some input on where you might like this to go.
At this time, I'll let the councilors make a feedback or comment.
Mr. Mayor, can I interrupt for just a second? I apologize. I'm just looking at the order of events and I'm curious maybe if the council wouldn't want to have a discussion about the water and utility first? Just to give them a better idea before you decide where to put this, it might make sense. It would just give you a little more information.
Well, I don't think we're really necessarily deciding tonight, are we?
We're, no, but. Correct. But there could be some information that might be beneficial to you. It's just a kind of an idea, just kind of popped in my head.
Okay, well, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and move, we'll come back and address this. We'll go ahead and move forward to water utility, stormwater utility rate discussion, and then we can come back to this. Go ahead.
So this begins on page 48 of your council packet. I'm just going to turn this one over to Brandon because he's going to dazzle and amaze you with his ability to work on spreadsheets and, and forecast numbers. So I watched him today, just so you know. He literally had 22 different windows open in his screen that he was pulling information from to put things together. So Brandon worked really hard on this. And I'm going to, I'm just going to let him take it from here.
My computer was angry, so we restarted and we're doing fine. All right, so I have a lot of information to, to throw your direction. I want to make it clear from the get-go that this is not a decision point tonight. I'm not asking for, for council to make a decision on whether the rates are going to increase. We are looking for direction again, much like we were looking with the, the recovery plan funds. And we just want to give you all of the facts and information, answer questions that you may have, and then potentially, depending on your input, either bring back something back or not. So certainly, please, if you have questions as I go through this, stop me. I'm going to do the best I can to walk through all of this. And if there is something that doesn't make sense, let me know. I have pitch hitters that will certainly help with some technical questions. I saw Preston from Murray Smith pop on, and so there will be some, some engineering type questions that, that he may field along with public works. I don't see Trish, but Stephen is on the line, Greg's obviously here. So we will do everything we can to, oh, and Civil West, Matt from Civil West is on as well. We'll do everything we can to answer your questions, but this could get lengthy and I will apologize in advance. So it's budget time. And part of building these budgets includes conversations on what projects and I guess priorities you as a council want to see. As, as you all know, you are the final point of decision for that budget. And so we come to you first. The budget committee of the past has requested that if we're going to build some sort of rate increase into the overall budget, that we come to you first. So they're not looking at something that then we're going to end up pulling back. So that's what we're here to discuss tonight. I'm going to start with water. And then we will touch on stormwater, because as I quickly, carefully put this all together for you, I'm now realizing I didn't include a few storm slides, but there's not a lot there. So we'll be able to walk through that fairly easily. On the water side, so I've gone through and put together a little spreadsheet here on the screen for you. I'm going to walk through the lines just so that everybody here and at home can, if it's hard to see on the screen, I understand, we'll, we'll kind of cover everything that's here so that everybody has the same information. What we're looking at with the start of the new fiscal year, beginning July 1, we estimate that there will be $296,000 in funds that will roll over in our operating account, our operating fund. So as, as an informational point, there are three funds, four funds that cover water expenditures for our entire system. Our operating fund, which handles our debt payments, covers the water treatment expenditures, anything associated with running the water treatment facility, and then any operational funds for the distribution system. So that's our staff that, that handles the multitude of water lines in our city, handles our meters, it does handle replacement of our meters. Any operational expense comes out of that fund. You might hear me refer to that fund as Fund 500. Fund 501 is the Water SDC Fund. It's virtually empty. There is not much in SDC revenue coming in that will likely change with the increase in our SDC fees. But the, those funds can specifically be used to handle expansions of our system. So they're not used for general maintenance items. I cannot transfer out of that to handle a water main break unless we are going to repay it. But the SDC funds are specifically for expansion projects. Fund 502 is the Water Capital Fund. I call this the Distribution Capital. This fund handles everything that has to do with our water lines. Any water line repairs, any water line replacements will come from this fund. It is all capital money. There are no operating funds used out of that fund. It will only handle replacement of things that are capitalized and are capital assets to the city. The last fund that we have is Fund 503. That's the Water Depreciation Fund is its official title. I call that the Treatment Plant Capital Fund. And those funds are only for repairs and, and, and major maintenance to the water treatment plant itself. Again, it is a capital fund. There are no operating expenditures out of that fund. But it, it will provide for the, the treatment facility itself should something happen. So that's where, where we'll go from here. So 296,000 in our operating funds is what we will roll over at the end of this year. That's our estimate. The Water Capital Funds, this includes all of the capital that we have. We anticipate being 932,000 at the end of this year. We anticipate being 932,000 at the end of this year and will roll into next year. For the picture here, resource, this is all resources. This is money coming, money available for us to spend. So we do have some transfers that we do every year. So 545,000 is planned for the 2022 budget year. When I refer to fiscal year 2022, we're looking at July 1 of this current year to June 30 of 2022. So total resources available based on the existing funding is 1.77 million dollars. That's what we have to start with. Okay? Of that 1.77 million, we have a litany of projects and various operational expenditures that total at the bottom of that kind of right-hand column, right below the red line, at 4.2 million. Doesn't take a Finance Director to notice that 4.2 definitely exceeds 1.7 million. So how do we make up the rest? The rest is made up in user fees. That number is, you notice in the left-hand column, there's a long break and then a line just above the black line. 3.2 million is what we are anticipating in water revenue for the next fiscal year. That is without a water rate increase. So before any increases are applied, we anticipate 3.2 million given the existing system. How did I get there? It includes all of our existing accounts, what we have right now in the books, using 2019's calendar year consumption rates. Why did I use 2019? We use 2019 because 2020 was an odd year. I don't know if you all noticed. But our consumptions were significantly higher. Our revenues were way higher than we anticipated. There, if there is any silver lining in COVID, and that, that's very, very slim. It's that we saw additional consumption because more people were at home. So with that said, I used the 2019 consumptions, assuming that life will start to get back to normal. I think like all of you, all of us hope that we can get rid of these things in this semi near future and really get back out there and, and play in the parks with, with more than two households and whatever else we normally did in our lives. So with that said, total available resources to spend, $5 million. That's what I would have for next fiscal year. Remember, total expenditures was 4.2 million. The surplus at the end of next year, 786,163 dollars. Of that, I expect that 245,000 of that will remain in the operating fund. I try to leave two months of available money in the operating fund in case something happens to our revenues. We're not going to lose all of our revenues in one full swoop. If we are, we have some other problems. So two months really probably goes four, five or six months before we really run into problems. But as far as our calculation method, it says two months. That is, that ensures 250,000 remains in our Distribution Capital Fund, so enough money to handle a water main break, hopefully. And then that leaves 200,000 in our Treatment Plant Capital Fund. Sorry, lost my thought. Questions about that so far?
Any questions, Councilors?
So Brandon, under Operation and Management, or the O and M? So we're talking about, are we talking about us taking over the plant? I mean, this is all, it's that?
Yes.
That part of it also?
Yes.
And so okay. So we're thinking that's going to cost us 2.6 million to do that?
To handle all of the operations of the Treatment Plant and our distribution side, yes. We anticipate 2.6 million dollars in expenses.
And we've been paying what?
As far as the contract itself, we have been paying just north of a million dollars for the operation or for the, yeah, for the operation of the plant itself. And then on the distribution side. Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the exact number. This, this budget is actually relatively close to what we have been operating with. It's within the same range. It is slightly inflated because what next year's plan includes is $600,000 to replace all of our water meters with these Camstrip smart meters that should help catch some of our low flow issues and leaks across the city.
Okay.
So this, this likely 2 million is, is a, is a good, a good number for what it takes normally each year.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Okay, thank you.
Also, Counselor Gerson, there, when we take over the plant, there will be some one-time expenses that we're going to have to incur that first year. So we won't really recognize, or we don't anticipate really recognizing much of a savings in the first year, but years after that is when we should start to see those.
Any other questions?
All right. So this, I put together a couple of tables for you that we can kind of walk through. The, unfortunately, I had to split this into two slides because it didn't all fit on one, unless you wanted even tinier font than what you were looking at right now. So what, what Public Works and I, in, in collaboration with our engineers have gone through and done is outline how much money do we, we started with how much money do we have each year? And what projects do we need to complete to continue operating as we have? So I'm going to go through all of the projects, outline when we anticipate that they will be done, and then throw maybe what you all might think is the curve ball right at the end. So on this project list, these first, this first set of projects is everything that we will complete in 2022, so next budget year. The Backwash and it says VFD, so Variable Flow Device, is that right? Oh, sorry, Variable Frequency Drive. Mine gets the same picture across. That project was estimated originally at 570,000 and was, we were hoping that was going to be completed this year. What will be completed this year before June is the planning for that project. So the, the associated drawings, the, the, the materials, all of that outlined, so that when we start next calendar, or next fiscal year, we're ready to go. So Public Works has told me that we will spend about 50,000 in this year's budget with 520,000 remaining next year to actually do the work. So we are planning to carry that 520,000 into next year's budget. We have decided each year that $200,000 for small diameter water main replacements. We're going to make a program out of that, and each year we're going to allocate $200,000 for that project. Mostly that's two-inch mains, but that could mean any other small diameter water mains. And 200,000 Public Works has said is, is a decent number for them to, to keep making progress each year. The vacuum sludge recirculation pumps, thank you. Those are items in the water treatment plant that although the plant is 10 years old, 10, 12 years old, it has some faults. And there are some things that are not working as they should. So this is one of those items. The estimated repair cost is 300,000. There's basically one in each of the water trains that has to be replaced. That 300,000 is a hefty price tag in one fiscal year. So what I told Public Works is I'll give you $100,000 each year. Curveball coming. I'll give you $100,000 in each year so that you can complete that project. So you'll notice in the second column there, it says desired fiscal year was 2022. They were hoping to do that all next year. We don't have the capacity, funding-wise, to do that all next year, but we will be able to spread that out over three years and complete that. And, and they've assured me that that will, should be okay, barring any major catastrophic events. Fluoride System is another planned project, 86,000 for the coming fiscal year. I don't have much info on that, but certainly if you have questions, we can defer to others. Water Master Plan, we really want to update that plan. I think it's 10 years old. It's really old. The estimated cost to do that plan is 150,000. The plant, the idea at this point is that we would start that closer to the end of the next fiscal year, so April, May, June, somewhere in there. Spend 75,000 in this next fiscal year and then spend 75,000 the next fiscal year, helping to spread out our dollars to allow us to complete as many projects as possible. And then some streaming monitors, again, at the Treatment Plant. If you're not sensing a theme here, there's a lot of needs at the, at the Treatment Plant. $65,000, which we said, great, you can have that next year in our budget modeling. Across the top, you'll see available dollars for all of these capital projects, and you can see that available line quickly dwindling. And we are trying as best as possible to keep up with transfers to, to help that, to help out those projects. In the outlying fiscal years, so from 2023 through 2026, there are additional projects such as SCADA automation, and this is where I become the not favored person in the city when it is budget time, because I have to tell people no. So for example, SCADA automation, the Public, Public Works had hoped that they would be able to complete that in 2022. As much as we all wish, money does not grow on trees. And so I said, nope, you can't do that until 2024. So we have planned 195,000 to do this SCADA automation in 2024. Easy valves along our water system, these go in the distribution system itself to, to aid in the turn-on, turn-off of, of specific section, of sections of town. We've allocated 35,000 a year for that, beginning 2023. Canyon Creek Pump Station, another example of one that the, that Public Works had hoped they'd be able to complete in 2023, but we just don't have the funding for all of the projects. So we've pushed that off to 2026. You'll notice on the far right that it says $100,000 remaining. My plan at this point is to utilize some SDC funds to cover the remaining dollars of this project because this addresses capacity issues from a growth area. So this, this part of town has not, has not had the water system it needs. So we will leverage the SDC funds to cover half of the actual building of this pump station. The Water Treatment Plant Emergency Generator, we are currently working on alternative funding for this. And so I left it on the project list because it will likely need to be budgeted depending on who owns that emergency generator and how that process works. So I left it on, on here, but unfunded. Turbometer meters, 50,000 in 2023, a self-service bulk water station in 2024, a raw water valve, which Public Works can explain more if we, if we have questions about that, but the plan for that is 2025. A new water reservoir. Part of the Water Master Plan process is going to tell us where are the deficiencies in town? Where do we need water? Where are we not pumping enough water? What are the potential downsides to the resources we have on hand? Are our existing reservoirs enough? So we have put that project off as long as possible, but also trying to find 2.8 million dollars is going to be a hard task to complete. Because if you'll notice, at the very bottom, on the right-hand side, in, at the end of 2026, the fund balance across all of our available capital funds is 276,740 dollars. That doesn't come anywhere near 2.8 million. So what will need to occur is either refining another revenue source. Certainly if the council decided that the 2 million dollars we have coming to us from, from the federal government would better, would be best served in the water system. We could look at that project, maybe doing that earlier before the funding runs out. But at this point, we don't have a plan for that, especially from a funding standpoint. Now, all of this is information on what, what, what we need, the city, being you all, would need potentially to continue to make progress in the water system, to ensure that we are not leaking water. Every town has some leaks, but there is a reasonable threshold for, for what water loss looks like in a, in an, at a municipal organization. All of these projects help to, help us get to a point where we are continually addressing overall water distribution and making sure that we are getting our water from point A to point B, which, with point B being people's homes and businesses. $276,000 is not a lot of money at the end of, of 2026. As I mentioned before, I, I attempt to save a minimum of 250,000 in the Distribution Capital Fund. 276,000 will, will give us that 250,000. But this means there is nothing, zero, in reserve for the Treatment Plant itself. And in discussions with Public Works earlier today, a catastrophic event at the Water Treatment Plant could be one of our filters going down. So we have three operational filters at the Water Treatment Plant with room for more if we were to grow, but we have three currently going. If one goes offline, sure, we could probably, there's an asterisk on that, make it with, with two trains. However, we put ourselves at risk because if one of those other trains goes down, we have a problem. We can't supply enough water to the, to the, to the city. $2 million is, is a far cry from zero. And so what we're, what we're, what we're highlighting here is the city is, is actively working on trying to, city staff is actively working on trying to find additional funding mechanisms, going to the legislature to, to see if there's additional help that we can get. Looking for grants, looking for opportunities like, like Director Springman found with an organization that may potentially pay to put in the emergency generator so that we can continue to provide water on a regular basis. But sometimes, unfortunately, what is also necessary is there has to be some kind of, of additional funding mechanism. And right now, for the water system, that's rates. This plan that I've, that I put on the board and that I've worked out with Public Works includes no utility rate increase in the next year. It includes a, an assumption of 1.7% increase in utility rates in 2023 and 2.5% every year thereafter. This is where the, you as a council need to decide what should our priorities be? Is this list too ambitious, given our existing funding? Is this something that we need to pare back? Is having a reserve for the Treatment Plant a necessity for us? What, what direction do you as a council want staff to go to ensure that your goals, your priorities, the community's goals and priorities are met in the long term? So that's where I will stop. If you have questions for us, we're certainly happy to answer them. I will probably field initially and then shovel questions that I can't answer to other members of my support team behind me today. So.
Any questions, the counselors?
Mr. Mayor, if I may? So I was talking a while back about securing some type of loan, and you guys had mentioned that we're running into a wall when it comes to generating revenue unless we raise rates. I still don't know why we couldn't look further into securing that low-interest loan because the way it stands now, it sounds as if we're one second away from catastrophe while we're expecting citizens to bear the brunt of that on their shoulders. I just think that last council meeting, if I may, it said we need to find out more about the federal funds for the ARPA, figure out the engineer of record priority list, refine- figure out the engineer of record priority list, refine cost. Is that what, is that what this is? So we've already done multiple steps of this to put that loan information on hold. Are we gonna go any further with looking at a loan? Because it's, right now, I think it's such a low interest and it's so advantageous. We could get all of these things done right away to prevent catastrophe and then raise the rates over the course of time at a different time.
Yes, and that's, that's a great, that, that's exactly how, what, how that could work. The one thing that the, I would remind council is that anytime we incur debt, then that's additional money that we are paying out of our existing funds. And so that we didn't, wouldn't necessarily, council could decide we don't need a rate increase to pay for that debt over time, but, but there is a cost with incurring debt. And so certainly we'd have to just determine what's the best practice. And yes, the low interest certainly helps, but would add to our overall expenditures each year.
So is there a way to use that $2 million to start paying off some of that loan while we get plan for construction and whatnot, and then get the construction completed and use that $2 million?
I would say that potentially, yes. With, with the guidance from the, the US Treasury, I think we'll have some more information on whether we could do that. Certainly, I think what could happen is that we could incur the debt relatively soon and then have a project in mind that we could get started on while the rest of the, the federal funds trickle in and say that those funds are being used for that project. We'll have to wait until the Treasury guidance says whether that's allowable and whether we'd be allowed to pay debt with that. But the other problem with that, and Preston might be able to chime in better than me in this case, is that means we're picking out of a hat and saying, here's our project. Now let's get moving as fast as possible to get that off the ground.
Well, you just said the one is at catastrophe almost, so why couldn't we choose that?
Which one is the?
The filtration system for the.
Oh, that, that's a worst case scenario. We're not in that bucket certainly right now. And we wouldn't be able to take that 2 million that the, the federal government's giving us to set it in reserves for that potential someday, because we don't know when, when that's going to happen. And with a, with a federal requirement of it being spent before the end of the calendar year in 2024, we wouldn't be able to, to pocket it.
The other thing is last meeting, we talked about the DEQ and the stormwater. And I'm, I'm slightly concerned about that, if they're gonna, I don't know if this is true or not, fine us or whatever for not having the stormwater stuff set up. I mean, I think it's really important to look at a low interest loan and maybe use that 2 million as some sort of leverage or something, I don't know, to get ahead of that before it happens.
Yeah, certainly on the stormwater side, the 2 million, it, it doesn't say stormwater per se, as far as the allowables, but we were discussing that potentially that stormwater is a part of our sewer system. It runs through the same pipes, runs into the same plant, right? Nope, sorry, it skips our plant. So, so we would need to see if, again, if that's allowable per US Treasury guidelines. My hope is yes, because we do have needs that need to be met in the, the stormwater system and, and we'll certainly shift to discussing that here soon. But yes, I would love to.
I just get nervous about spending all of this money when we could maybe use it to earn more money or leverage it for some more money or something like that to get more projects finished in a quicker amount of time and then maybe pass the cost on to the customer after things are upgraded.
Given the, the timeline on spending the funds, we'd have to, what we could possibly do is say, we're going to use that 2 million to complete some of these projects on our list and set our own money aside for the purpose of, of potentially obtaining a small, a low-cost loan and trying to stretch our dollars that way. It's what we're doing with the wastewater treatment plant right now is, is kind of leveraging the state money so that we're sitting on ours, earning interest and, and continuing to expand our capacity with it. So yes, that's certainly an option and something to consider as part of the discussion in the other agenda item of what are we doing, what do you want to do with, with those funds?
Thank you.
So Brendan, if we did take out a loan, would the cost of a loan have to come out of the water fund?
Yes.
That's the way it works, right?
Yes.
Wherever it goes, that's what pays for it, right?
Yes. You could, could, per, per local budget law, say the general fund will help cover that. But then you'd have to have general fund expenditures available for that, too.
Okay, and then you fortunately or unfortunately made the comment that this may be too expansive. So are we looking at things here that are not? I mean, I knew that the new water reservoir and the Canyon Creek Pump Station. Okay, but are we looking at fluff here at all? Or are we looking at actually what really needs to be done for the greatest good for the longest period of time?
Yeah, I would say that in going through the list with Public Works, these are items that have to be completed at some point. They're, they're the priority projects. Certainly their five-year list could have been more expansive as far as the water system is concerned, but these are the ones that, that they determined were priority projects sometime in the next five years. I don't think we're looking at fluff. Could we potentially put some off? I think that's up for debate and certainly could be discussed, but there may be things in here that others think are fluff. But staff's recommendation and staff's proposal to you and the Budget Committee is that these are projects that need to be completed.
Okay, well, I trust Greg. So, so the Canyon Creek thing, pump station and the new water reservoir, both of those could be SDC funds, could they not?
Definitely yes, on the Canyon Creek Pump Station. And I think Preston would tell me, yes, the new water reservoir could potentially be SDC funds, depending on, does it increase our capacity in the system?
Okay.
Right, Preston?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I got a couple comments. You know, back in the day, when we went with our wastewater rate increase, it was hurtful. But in order for us to get loans and those kinds of things, sometimes they tell us we have to do that.
Sure.
And I'm not for another loan. We've got enough of them. We spend thousands and thousands of dollars paying those bills. And with all due respect, everybody here, is that they're gonna, the taxpayers are going to pay for it one way or the other. Can we afford to go with another loan? Maybe we can. But, and I, you know as well as I do, I've talked to him many, many times and you many, many times and the mayor and some others. I hate increases, right? I hate them. However, they're necessary to keep our plants running. We, we can't, we can't deny that. Now, a low, low interest rate loan, that's a great thing. But eventually they're going to pay, the taxpayers are going to pay for maybe 20 years to pay that off. So what is the, what, I mean, you gotta, you gotta weigh one against the other. And you know that I don't like raising taxes. I don't. But we, we've been through this so many times from back in the day that it got to the point where we were in a position that we had a tough time getting out of. And mostly, mostly on the water or wastewater plant, the water treatment plant, the other one. And, and, and so at some point, you're going to have to make a call whether you want to have another loan for 25 years or however long that's going to be.
Sure.
Or you want to raise the rate a little bit now and not be five years or two or three, the next council that has one and they have to raise it $5 or something. Because that's where we were.
Right.
It's horrible. It's hard, but it has to be, we have to make a decision on which way we want to go. And I can tell you, I'm not going to vote for another loan. I'm just not. I think that we, we have an opportunity to raise it a little bit at a time. And I don't know when the last time we raised it, but it's, well, we actually did it on January 4th on the last budget. And we turned that down and that's okay.
Right.
But we would have been in a better position now had we kept that. But I, and I, you know, I posted that out that I wanted to see if we could get that done and get back to whatever day that was when we voted on that or we didn't vote, we did vote on it. But we would have been a lot better off now had we done that at that point. And I understand why we didn't. I understand that 100%. But we have to figure out what we're going to do and how we're going to get there.
I think the, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, the thing I would say about loans is they, they certainly serve a purpose. I think when it comes to this new water reservoir, there's a, there is a very high potential at $2.8 million that we will likely have to look, we will have to look at debt. But what, what I've been trying to do as, as Finance Director in my time so far is try to bring whatever we can into our own accounting. And by that, I mean, for example, we used to, there would, we used to lease vehicles that we would pay over three years. We would pay some interest with that. That's $3,500. Doesn't seem like a lot, but that's $3,500 that, that the city doesn't have to use for what it needs. So what we've done now is we have set up a system in which if we get a new car, we figure out what the life hood, what the likelihood is that that car will survive. So I'll use a police vehicle in this instance, I'll say five years. We take the purchase price of that vehicle, divide it by five, and each year we set aside a reserve. That does two things for us. One, it ensures that we keep that cash in our own pockets, the city's pockets, and earning interest on that. I'm not driving around in a Tesla. And secondly, it ensures that at the end of five years, we have enough to go out and replace that vehicle. And so if things are getting tight, if, if funding gets to a point where, since I'm using the police department, if our compression comes back and they can't necessarily fund a car in their operating expenditures, we already have it set aside. And so we're not losing any ground. Are we potentially putting off then setting aside money for the future cars? Maybe, but that's, those are decisions that are made in the moment based on what funding and operating funds we have. But we're trying to do that in-house so that we're not sending additional dollars in interest costs out the door. Like I said, there is a time and a place, and certainly we will have to entertain whether debt is going to be an option for various projects and various needs. We may very well be there. I don't have an issue with, with having that conversation, but the more that we can do in-house means the more that we save, the more that we keep in the community's pocket and the more that we can have our own interest earnings. We'll need interest rates to come back up before I actually see something tangible in interest earnings, but at least we'll have something.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Well, first, just a comment in regards to Council Trask's comments. It is a sure thing that we would not have received that $7 million from the state if we had not have increased our rate, wastewater rates when we did. That was one of the tipping points for the representatives who are serving on the committee who made that decision was because we had increased our wastewater rates to show that we had skin in the game. We, none of us felt comfortable with that, but at the same time, with the expenses and the the issues we had at that facility, we needed to do something in the moment. I, Brendan, I'm putting you on the spot. Not a question I thought of earlier in the week. What's the percentage rate that is included in water user fees? On a monthly basis, let's say if somebody is a water usage fee, what is that? That's debt.
With the existing refinance, we're paying probably half a million dollars on $3 million in overall revenue that we receive. So we're probably looking at somewhere between 30 and 35%.
Sorry, user fees.
Nope, 20, sorry, 20.
So everybody's using, they're already paying for some debt someplace. Because the revenues that we receive in the water fund are from where? Revenues come from?
The revenues in the, in the water fund are from user fees.
That's all we have. We don't have revenue from someplace else.
Right, we get a small amount of interest earnings. We get about 30,000 a year in water connection fees, which is users paying to connect to the system. But $3 million a year is, is user fees.
So any water improvements we do at the distribution center are done for the benefit of the people and the people have to pay for it because they use the water? Right?
Yes.
I'm not necessarily against a low interest rate loan. I just, I'm hesitant on debt, as I know that it has been a determining factor in what the rates are. So the more we incur in debt, we just have to consider that. And I, I'd need to see figures before I was in favor of that. And on top of that, sorry. The concern that I have is we have not increased the stormwater rate for 15 years. That, that's a long time to keep the rate the same for the benefit. And I think the hope was to benefit the people and yet it's harming us in the long run because we don't have the funds to fix things that are broken.
Low interest rates do serve their purpose, but I want to remind the council, you do not want to overextend yourself as a community.
So, Mr. Mayor. We asked this question about a low interest loans and being able to pay things off. And the recommendation came back to us at that time that although we, it could benefit us, the recommendation is no, because it's not good timing for us. We're okay. And I, I trust that. The second thing is, is I believe that our staff will leverage every dollar that they can and that they know what dollars can be leveraged and what dollars can't be leveraged and those expenses. This isn't a new story. We're always talking about water pressure and people in town that frankly, I think I got too much water pressure sometimes. But as far as, yeah, I, I'm not going to say that to Greg. But there are people in town who pay the same rates as anybody else and their water pressure sucks. And that's not fair. We have problems all over and there's always an investment. My heart went straight to Main Street. Our community has suffered. And it went to roadways and that's where I wanted it to go. But when, every day when people turn on their tap and when we had those fires, the extreme fear we had of running out of water, we have communities in town and the state that is wet as we are have bacteria issues and all kinds of stuff. So I trust this recommendation. I trust that this is what we need to do. We can figure out the rest. We're going to make it. We're, we are light years from where we were at and I, I don't, we don't need a loan. We're okay. This is money we hadn't really counted on, but it's really going to make a difference for our folks.
Any other questions?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Brendan, you said that you, in the budget, you have a 1.7% water rate?
For not this next, not, not the coming year, but the, the next year.
Right, okay. So 1.7% raise in my normal water bill, not counting June, July and August, is a dollar and 3 cents a month. 2.5 is a dollar and 55 cents a month in my, in the lower range of mine.
Right.
That doesn't even equate to a coffee at Starbucks, okay? So I'm just saying that we're not asking for a whole lot of raise here. I recognize that if we double the stormwater rates, which is adds another dollar a month to that, that we're now, we're looking at $2 more a month, which again, doesn't come to a Starbucks coffee. So I'm, for me, I, the greatest good for the largest number of people for the longest period of time is how do we keep the water pure, running, available to everybody? That's my comment.
I think you'd have to almost a half a year to equate to a Starbucks cup of coffee. Mr. Mayor, I've got, I, we don't know yet what the SDC is going to help us for. We don't know.
Right.
But I can tell you what, it's going to be pretty dang good. And it, and it goes across the, the whole thing that we have going when you know what they are. You know, the water, the waste of the streets and all that stuff. And, and if we would have had that many years ago, we might not be, well, no, I know we would not be in the same situation that we're in right now. But those SDC funds are going to make a difference because there is people building everywhere. And starting that on May 1st, I, I'm, I'm going to be very interested in seeing how much that comes in. And also, Greg, have we had any data on how much savings we had with the 350,000 that was going down Ninth Street? Do we have any numbers on that?
Not at this time because Jacobs, um, is running that plant and we play a fat, a flat fee for that contract. And so they paid electricity, the chemicals. And so, you know, hopefully if we would have had possession of it, we could have potentially seen some sort of savings. I don't know what that ra, uh, ratio is, but once we take it back, we should then see that, we, we won't see that number, but it would at least affect our pockets.
Yeah, okay.
I have to agree with you, Council Trask. The SDCs, I think it's gonna be a little bit of a game changer. Much is on the books to be built in the Sweet Home next year.
I, I think the, the thing to remember about SDCs, as much as, as some don't like to pay SDCs, nobody likes fees. Let's, let's be honest. Nobody likes fees in general. The part about the SDCs is now we are in a position where, um, we will have funding to cover our growth. So instead of using customers, ratepayers, funds to pay for our growth, to expand our system, we'll have a different pot of money for that. And that's the way it should be. That, that's the way, that's what those SDCs were designed for, is to prepare for what, what is needed to support that infrastructure, that new housing, the new businesses. Um, we won't be in a position where we're asking folks to pay for it retroactively. That's good, that's great news for this, for this, for this city, quite honestly. Um, if I might, there have been a couple of comments already about stormwater. So I'd like to shift gears a little bit. You'll find that this portion of my spiel is a lot smaller. Um, and such that the stormwater fee right now at a dollar per EDU equivalent dwelling unit brings in $65,000 a year. Um, I, we budget half of a person over there to address stormwater type work. Um, that covers about $58,000 of that overall budget. There's not much left, um, other than to pay for some small supplies to either handle some, some leak patching in pipes or, um, you know, clear out some clogs and, and stuff like that. So we don't have a lot of capacity in the stormwater system. And it's been discussed that we have a significant number of places that really could use some attention. Um, as you've seen, I think, given what plan we have here on the screen, I think, my, my opinion as your Finance Director, is that we could get by in this next fiscal year without a water rate increase. Um, I know that, that, that there are other places that we need some of those utility funds, specifically the stormwater system. We have to do something there. Um, as much as I've said that nothing on this list brings us to a catastrophic point, I think we are at a breaking point in our stormwater system and that we have been band-aiding that for as long as we can. We have places that are literally underwater with any kind of rain. And, um, although it hasn't looked like it for the last two weeks, we do live in a wet community. Um, we get rain on a regular basis. And so I, I think, quite honestly, my opinion is that, um, we should focus our attention and our resources on fixing our stormwater system. And that includes a stormwater master plan first, so we know where we're going. So we're not just throwing buckets at, at minor things. Um, we want to be informed about what are our needs? Where do we need to go first? Um, and certainly if we can fix things, I'll call it downstream of other issues, it could impact other places. We could see, um, water receding in places that it might normally build up. And so having that master plan will tell us what, where do we need to go first. But we can't afford a water, uh, stormwater master plan right now with the 65,000 that we have. And so, um, if it would appease the council, what I'd like to do is bring back a stormwater rate increase for the next year. Leave the water where it is. The wastewater side is in a significantly good position. I don't anticipate, I don't have plans to bring you a, a wastewater increase in any of my five-year plans. Nothing. I have nothing. Even taking on additional debt to pay for our plant. We are in a good spot there. Um, and I, I don't want to, to bring something we don't need. Um, but I think we are at a point where there's nothing else we can do in stormwater except raise that rate. And I don't anticipate even asking you for what, um, the, the original contractor, the original group that came to do that evaluation for us in 2006 or eight, um, they recommended four. I don't, I don't anticipate asking you for that. Um, but we need to do something. That's, that's a point at which I can't, there, even, even if we were to try to take on a loan, there's no existing money to pay for that, for that debt, even in the short or long term. Um, there's no capacity. So we need to do something there. Um, my recommendation to use would be that. Focus on the stormwater system for this next year. We have a plan in place. Let's work through this, um, and revisit the water side as we go through and complete projects. Um, but we need to focus our attention elsewhere.
Any other questions? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, last one. So if I may go back to the loan, my line of thinking is securing the funding, locking in the contract rate so we don't price ourselves out of construction, including stormwater, water distribution or whatever. That low interest loan would allow us to have the money now and then gradually increase over time, the customer. When they have a satisfactory product, they'll be happy to pay an increase. When they have an unsatisfactory product, they get really upset when they have to pay an increase. So my line of thinking is get the money now at a really low cost, get the projects on the books, make sure we don't price ourselves out of construction so we can get the stuff that we need done, done. And then when they have to pay the increase to pay it all back, they'll be happy. It's a win-win. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say I completely agree with Angelita. I have a hard time swallowing any increases in fees or taxes. So I would rather see us go with a loan option if we could look more into that and then get the benefit later on.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Brandon, can you just review again, is the stormwater is a dedicated fund? Or, so if we get a loan, can it be used for both water and stormwater? Or can it only be used for water?
So it, it really depends on, on the, the, um, conditions, I guess, of the loan or what we're going out for. Um, so for example, when we just did our, our existing refinance that we completed last month, um, it is one debt item. We went out for one, one piece of debt, a whole 5.8 million, but it covers multiple things. And so that's, that was part of the instructions, part of the initial statements or official statements that said it's one loan, but it's covering multiple things. And so in that case, in going out for a debt option, we can have it cover multiple things. But then if we're doing stormwater projects with a portion of it, we're using stormwater money to pay the debt item and then water subsequently to pay for any water items. So what I've, what I've told Ray before is there's a lot of this that you as a council could get to a point where you say, here's what we want. We want these things to be completed. And then I handle your accounting to make sure that we meet federal, state, and, and, and I'll call it accounting law. But yes, we could potentially take on debt to cover stormwater and water projects all at the same time.
Um, did you say that there was no extra money though in the stormwater fund in order to cover debt payment?
Correct. There would have to, there is nothing in stormwater right now. So I wouldn't even be able to take on debt or nobody's going to give me any money because I don't have a way to repay it.
So you're gonna bring to us a proposition of how that would look for stormwater?
Sure. Yes. I will, I'll bring that, uh, to your next meeting. Um, I will also include some information on what we could look at for, um, a, a low-cost loan so that, that all of the information's on the table. Um, we can look at what projects we could fund with that, what it would mean for our funds and where we could set those aside, um, for future growth.
Do you think that we're already at capacity for projects?
Uh, yes. I, I would say if we were to go out for a, a debt item, that it would cover existing projects in this list. We wouldn't add to this list, um, because we certainly can't tax public works anymore than they already are. Um, this list that we have on the screen is, at least as far as the water side, is what public works feels comfortable saying, we'll tackle these in five years. And the only changes that we will hopefully see is anything that becomes emergent. So if, if a main breaks, you know, we'd put that in, in above some of these others. But yet this, this is what I, what I feel is, is kind of the limit to our capacity.
Yeah. Cause I was worried about that because we had the conversation about taking over the wastewater treatment facility, making that transition and not overtaxing our staff with whatever else that we get struck with in the process. Um, that's why the emergency generator is so very important to us. So I, I agree that flooding is serious, but at the same time, we have to be realistic about what we're chipping away at here. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, so I have roughly 20 years of government experience in towns between 8,000 and 25,000 in population. This is an aggressive schedule of projects, um, for town, for a town our size, no doubt about it. We will be leveraging, uh, our engineer of record. Um, and that's the advantage of having that engineer of record on a contract that we have is when we can afford to use them and get things done, we can. And when we don't have it, we just don't use them. Um, but this is a, a, a very aggressive schedule, in my opinion, uh, to get projects done. You know, we've been working hard. It's been really frustrating for all of us on staff because as we keep digging in, we just keep finding all of these things. And, 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 you know, all of this maintenance that has just been put off and put off and put off. And, um, they're just, there comes a point where you can't kick that can anymore. So what I will say, uh, is kudos to all seven of you because the discussion is not about not doing what needs to be done. It's about how do we do it? So kudos to all seven of you for recognizing that we can't kick the can down the road and that these things need to be done in order to maintain the integrity of our utilities. Um, so thank you for that and for recognizing that we also as staff just, just we want to do and get things done and provide good service. Um, I mean, with that being said, we'll continue to, to work numbers until you, uh, reach a consensus. Uh, and once four of you come to a decision, then, then we will carry that forward and, and make that happen. So thank you for that.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Brandon, when you do the figures for the loan, would you also include what it would cost us to do that loan?
To repay it? Yes.
To repay it? What, what we would pay each year, et cetera, et cetera, out of each fund?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Anything else, Brandon?
That is all I had for this purpose. So I will see you again next meeting.
Plan act funding allocation for discussion, uh, once again.
So now that you're more aware and we've been able to share some additional information with you on, on the condition of some of the utilities, now you kind of have $2 million of play money? Is that the best way to put it? Or a gift, uh, a grant, um, that you can now in your mind kind of think about maybe where we would want to put that money. Again, we've, we've just spent an extensive amount of time on, on the water and the stormwater. But of course, we've got issues in our collections as well as, as you know, uh, and issues within our wastewater treatment plant, which we are addressing. Uh, that, the wastewater treatment plant, uh, was, it was difficult and it had to be a significant increase, uh, a couple of years ago. Uh, but I'll reiterate what Counselor Coleman, uh, shared and, and that was, we didn't, we're gonna end up in this project with 40 to at least 40% of the project if everything, and we're leveraging dollars on top of dollars, but we're looking at 40% of this $28 million project, maybe even as much as 50% from outside funding sources, depending on what happens with, with some federal budget money, um, moving forward. Preston, I, I don't know, Preston's still on the line. Um, but you know, that Preston works with cities all over the Pacific Northwest and, and that's almost unheard of. And the value to that is that, yeah, he's giving us a thumbs up. Thank you, Preston. The value to that is now you as a council have not locked future councils into decisions. So a few years ago, you didn't have a choice. You had to make that increase. There was no other option. The amount that you chose to increase, it was probably at that point in time, higher than it needed to be to get us by that year. But by doing that, we're gonna end up with nearly $5 million in the bank that we've been collecting interest on, that we're now leveraging to the additional total of $9 million from the state, an additional $3 million from USDA, potentially more from USDA and potentially more from Business Oregon as we move forward. Um, we will attempt to do the same thing with any of the, uh, funding that you approve. Um, we've been blessed and we've been fortunate to get support of our local legislators as we've done these things, but we will continue to do that.
I think at this time, we'll go ahead and start with Counselor Sanchez and work around for a consensus, not as a decision, but just as a general idea about that $2 million or where they're kind of their thought it should go towards. And then it'll give us an idea. Go ahead.
Um, Beans says we don't have to spend it until 2024. I'd like to set it aside and maybe earn some money on it if possible, until we could figure out which projects we need to get done first and foremost, and then use some of that money for the infrastructure projects.
Mr. Mayor, I was thinking that we could, um, reimburse the streets maintenance fund, um, since it was the one fund that was low. And then from there, I think that it would be good to, um, I think putting, earning some interest would be a great idea as well. But, um, I'm really interested in seeing if we could tackle some of the broadband issues in Sweet Home, as we know that Sweet Home is growing from people who are coming in working remotely. I think not only would it benefit those residents, it will benefit the current residents, but also will benefit small businesses in town and the larger businesses who lose their internet on a regular basis. Um, but it can also benefit our schools. So I think broadband and investing part of that into, um, that issue could be looking towards the future, but that's my input.
Hope everybody, I, in my gut, I think there's more coming in that area and that, um, I think we need to deal with our water issues. And so, um, however, that's divvied up by staff recommendation. It's fine with me.
I kind of like the idea of let's make some money on it first, first and foremost. And then, um, I kind of like the, the water and wastewater treatment, you know, funds to look at for that money to go.
Funny, Counselor Coleman, I tend to agree with you on my list. Um, I have streets as number one, replacing that street maintenance fund. And, um, I do believe that broadband would, um, help everyone in the community, businesses as well as, uh, you know, schoolchildren in schools, et cetera, et cetera. So I would like to see some investigation into the cost of that.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I don't have an issue with saving that money. And I, I trust what you guys are doing. Okay. And I talked to Greg about that a while back, that when he comes to us and he's got all these projects he wants to do, I ask him if he could prioritize those, maybe one to five, just pick a number. And then I also know that if you do number one, maybe number three's the next one because of something happened. And I could totally trust what you're doing. And I am not opposed to saving some of that money and getting some interest off it or whatever we can do. But now, Brandon, do we have to use some of that money pretty quick?
Uh, no, I, we'll receive it here in the next, like I said, 30 days. And then we really do have until December 31st, 2024 to figure out what to do with it.
Okay. We have to pay, we have to use it before the next, uh, before, yeah, okay.
Just as long, yeah, we can save it over a couple of fiscal years at this point.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to see it go towards the, or replacing the money out of the street maintenance fund and then go straight to like water distribution. Cause I feel like that's probably should be the number one, but. and then go straight to like water distribution because I feel like that's probably should be the number one, but.
Thank you, everybody.
Discussion. I have a question though. Wasn't there some second part to that, about 2026? What was that? 2024? And then there was another deadline for 2026. Is that part of this?
No, I don't see anything. I don't remember anything related to 2026.
I'll have to go back and look. Thanks.
I think we'll, I, the consensus I got is to save money and see where we can make some interest off this money. And I think the bottom line is where the greatest impact will be for our community in the end.
Sure. In, in that time, we'll get a couple of the master plans in place. Maybe give us a little better idea of where we can get the biggest bang for the dollar. The only thing I want to caution council about is I believe interest rates right now is 0.6%. So I'm not sure we're going to make a whole lot of revenue. Brandon can, I think we just had a little bit of that discussion today.
We're doing the best. So yes, in our local government investment pool, I think rates are down to 0.6. They might be at 0.7%, virtually nothing. But we are making efforts to, to try and invest outside of that to maximize our return. It's still not going to be 20% or anything certainly, but we're, we're doing the best that we can to maximize return on our investment.
I was just listening to a radio this morning and they were talking about how when COVID hit, everybody wanted bicycles and that if you want bicycle parts, you have to wait two years now to get them. As American cities get this money, do we potentially see a problem with getting parts for infrastructure?
And I, I think that's something definitely we'll have to keep an eye on. Yes, is my initial response. We're already seeing a lot of supply chains be kind of compromised and tightened. We also need to focus on the fact that, and nothing is a foregone conclusion, obviously, but DC is discussing infrastructure plans, which could further restrict what is available as far as resources. And as with any supply chain and, and economics, you're looking at increased demand means increased prices. So.
I can tell you right now, the supply chain is, is definitely impacted. And you talk about price increases, I can tell you firsthand, things are skyrocketing.
Cause so many things are coming from China and then they are not increasing the factory's production because they're looking at when this is over, that those demands will drop back down and they don't want to make that investment. So if you want a clutch or a sprocket or whatever, there is a two-year waiting. And so I would caution waiting on anything.
Well, yeah, I agree with that because that is a concern because right now finding parts is, is a challenge. And it's, you talk about supply chain, just a little freeze in Texas, what it did for plastic pipe. Anyway, I, I agree with you. It is kind of a concern right now with supply chain and what the prices are going right now for.
Yeah, we're having the lead time right now on what we call some of the plastic pipe C900 is months out. Based on the freeze that happened in Texas, a lot of the resin and poly pipe is made down there. So that's one of the things we're seeing already.
Nothing else for tomorrow. We'll move on to ordinance bills. There's nothing there at the moment. Reports committees, anybody have things to report on their committees?
Nikki Galore. So if we get a chance to take a look at it, we were very pleased with the number of photos that were submitted and, and the depth of them. So anyway.
The Ad hoc Committee meets the third Monday of the month. And Western University is going to be doing a presentation this time on how the engagement with the high school students is going, that mentoring, they're going to be doing a very nice report. And so it's kind of exciting. You might want to tune into that one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to point out that Greg told me they, they finished much of the concrete at Sankey Park. And he showed me a picture. You need to drive by and look at it because it's pretty doggone amazing. All that fencing junk is gone and, and they cleaned it up. And once again, Public Works did a really good job of that. And I saw him out working today on the meeting strip. So anyway, if you get an opportunity, just drive by and, and see what it looks like because it's pretty darn good.
Any other further? Mayor's Report, I just want to bring up some dates of interest for councils to remember. April 20th, 6:00 PM, the LID meeting here is it here at City Hall, Ray, that discussed Willow. April 22nd is our budget meeting, 6:00 PM. And that's here at City Hall, correct? Okay. And of course, the next council meeting is the 27th. I also want to say we, Counselor Gerson and I attended the Child Abuse Awareness, I don't call it ceremony, but down the police department last Saturday. It was very good, very professional. The guest speaker there, the gal that runs, she did a phenomenal speech. Hats off to you and your police department, your efforts. City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would just like to say thank you. Your guys' discussion tonight was exactly what people elected to do. You discussed, you debated, you agreed, you were respectful, you disagreed, and you still came to a consensus that we as staff can act upon. So I'd like to just thank you for that and congratulate you for that. Budgets are not easy and budgets are really hard right now. And, and I think the seven of you did an extremely good job. So as staff, I'd like to thank you for that. As far as my report, first and foremost, we have received a special event application from the, from Shettig for the Oregon Jamboree to hold an event this summer. We're all aware of, of the changing guidelines and rules. But they, they've got to do some things. They're, they're being optimistic. But for them to have any opportunity to be able to put an event on, they've got to start doing some things now. So I just want to let you know that we as staff, Jeff has spent quite a bit of time looking through their, their application. We will sit down as staff and work with them on that as well. And I also want to tell you, the Jamboree is very aware that they're trying to hit a moving target right now. So of course their discussions are something much smaller than they've done in many, many years. Two, there may not be anything. But if they don't start moving ahead now, it will be nothing, no matter what it would be allowed at times. So I want to let you know that we are working with the Jamboree. And they're, they've been, they're doing a great job in working with us and understanding the dilemma that we all face. So I don't want you to be surprised if you see some announcements or some advertising that they're looking to hold an event prior to you actually seeing and approving their special event application. So. But they're just kind of at a point where they can't wait anymore. We can't really do much for them. So we're just working with them to figure out the best that we can. Library Services Director Recruitment. We had 12 applicants. Nine of those 12 were extremely impressive on paper. There was both a Masters in Library Service and a Masters in Business Administration. There was somebody with an education from Cornell that applied. We had applicants from multiple states, not just West Coast. So it's, it's going to be a great candidate pool to choose from. That being said, we're going to do a, a virtual first round to limit that nine down to four or five. And, and then bring that last four, five, maybe six in for an actual in-person interview. So for this initial round, again, it will be virtual. I would welcome what counselor, I know Counselor Gerson has expressed interest in involved. She's been very supportive in the library. Counselor Coleman obviously is now, as of tonight, the liaison for the council. I will ask that whoever is on there has read the book, The Ideal Team Player. We will be basing pretty much all of our hiring decisions on the book. So if you could let me know, then we'll, we'll arrange that. It won't be for, at least until sometime next week before, excuse me. Next week at the absolute early. Saturday morning from 9:00 AM until 1:00, 2:00 ish o'clock. Or until they run out, Samaritan Hospital Healthcare System will be holding a mass vaccination clinic at the community center. It will be using the, the shot that requires two, not the Johnson and Johnson, thankfully, as we found out today. So the second date will be May 8th. I need to take some time and, and thank some partners in this community that are making this happen. Sweet Home Fire and Ambulance District is going to be a huge partner. Not only is Chief Behringer volunteering for the day, but they're committed to having a, an ambulance unit there all day for us. The Boys and Girls Club is allowing us to use the gymnasium all day to make it happen. Boys and Girls Club, let's see, the Lynn Shuttle, Ken and Dawn are helping us offering to even shuttle people back and forth. And the Rotary Club is volunteering to help man. A couple of counselors have also volunteered, Counselor Gorley and Counselor Gerson. Anybody else who's interested in volunteering, feel free to, to give me a, an email or a call. But we're excited for this event and we're very thankful for Samaritan for making this happen. Again, Samaritan made this happen. They, they, their doctors reached out to their administrators and said, hey, this community needs this to happen. So thank you very much to, to those community partners. As the mayor mentioned, this is Brandon's favorite time of year. It's budget season. Yay. And your first meeting, again, the initial meeting is fairly short. We hand out a draft budget document for you to view and peruse during your leisure time because it's riveting reading. And that meeting is again Tuesday, April 20th, 6:00 PM here. And as the mayor mentioned, Willow Street LID meeting, that is a community meeting simply to throw out some additional ideas with the community members to get their input on it. It's strictly discussion, no kinds of decisions at all expected to be made on that evening. Council's free to attend or not attend. It will be available both in person and virtually. You could sit in the comfort of your own home and listen in to the ideas that come from the public. Staff has prepared a couple different scenarios that we can run by them with those costs, see if something's a little more palatable to the community members. And then take that back and, and move forward and we'll present that information again more formally. And last on my list is our executive team training. We will be leaving the executive team, which is all the department heads and some mid managers will be leaving tomorrow, will be back Friday. Be various items that we'll be training on and particularly labor laws, updates to labor laws, management practices, those kinds of things. And looking forward to that with, with this team. So we have expanded this group compared to what we did two years ago when we last did this, to include a few more of our, what I refer to as middle management team, in order to help them understand how to, how to appropriately manage people and supervise people. So. With that, I'd take any questions from the council?
One quick question about the budget. Have you reached out to our budget committee to make sure we've got them all coming?
We will have, we have one, two openings now. So we now have two openings that we will be flying to try and fill.
Cause I know I've, I've been advised that Mr. Hamblin is in a serious health issue going on.
Okay.
So we may want to look into that if he has not, if that's not been brought to attention.
We reached out to him, I think, today.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add on to the budget thing, well, I can't listen to myself talk at the same time. Just as a, as a heads up, the budget document this year is going to be electronically distributed as per Oregon law. If you need a printed copy, please let me know. But we are going to leverage the software that we have to distribute that electronically. And it will be available on the 20th as we have indicated in our timelines. So again, if you need a paper copy, please don't hesitate to ask, but I'll need a little bit of a heads up. I have two noted. Three, four.
I'd say plan on printing 14 of those bad boys.
Do you all want paper copies? That doesn't surprise me.
Not a shock.
For members of the public, do you remember there is a fee associated with that? It is in our fee schedule. I think it's $15. Don't quote me. I haven't looked, but I think it's $15 for members of the public. If they want a printed copy, but it's free online. That's a fee, not a tax. Robert would tell you that we can't add tax, only fee.
The courts would disagree with you.
Okay, thank you. Department Directors Reports, any questions of our Department Directors or Department Directors? Anything to bring up? City Attorney, you have anything? Council business good or nothing?
Wait, Mr. Mayor, if I might?
Go ahead.
Sorry. I would, this is my, my monthly reminder that tomorrow is shut off day. We have, I think Lacey told me 33 accounts, which is significantly less than we've had in the past. I'm really excited about that. Nobody likes turn offs certainly, and I don't like it either. But 33 is a, a good feat for us.
That is by far the lowest number I think we've ever had, having been here for four and a half years.
I think my staff just earned lunch. So.
That's good news. There's nothing else further? We will go ahead and adjourn at 8:36.